Okay, it's 6:30. I will call this meeting to order. Karen, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Monson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Councilmember Husnik.
Here.
And Mayor Vane.
Here.
I'd ask all those who are able to rise to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, council. Before you, we have an agenda for tonight's special meeting. I will look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
One second.
Motion on a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We do have an open forum this evening. We would ask, open forum, comments are welcome at all meetings. We would ask all of those who are interested in speaking tonight to, please limit your comments to three minutes. And it looks like we have one signed up for open forum, and we'll add you as well. Kelly Gunderson? Wrong, we'll add you after Ms. Gunderson.
(inaudible) first.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Welcome.
Thank you for the time, council. My name is Kelly Gunderson, and I'm actually a resident of Lino Lakes, very close by. But I wanted to just express to you my interest in this issue from a freedom perspective. I actually work for an organization where we believe in government getting out of the way, and that we are for the individual making their decisions that best suit them, so that they are most prosperous in their life. In Lino Lakes, we have four contracted servicers for trash and recycling. Republic is one of them. And it just so happens that I canceled my contract with Republic last week after I couldn't negotiate a better rate when they had, over the last two years, each year, increased my rates by double-digit percentages. I tried to negotiate somewhere in the middle, and I got nowhere after speaking to, on two occasions, I think, to five people. I was willing to go halfway between what a competitor had quoted me and what they could offer, and I was flat-out refused. I just want to make you aware of that, that one servicer in a city feels that they have all the power. And the individual, and the citizen, or even the business that needs to contract for this service, has no power whatsoever. They're left at your whim of this one servicer. And so I would encourage you to look at this issue quickly. I understand that it's been a long-time tradition in Lino Lakes to have one servicer for trash and recycling. I would encourage you to start looking at opening up that process to other businesses to come in, and allowing your citizens, and your businesses, and your taxpayers to have more choice in what they feel is best for them. I am probably going to go to another contractor that's going to offer me different things in terms of their services, where they're going to come and wash out my trash bins twice a year, that they're going to take care of cart service better, that they're going to offer more services rather than what I had with Republic. I've lived in Lino Lakes for 20 years. This will be the fourth servicer that I am going to, and I love that freedom of choice. And because of this issue here in Lino Lakes, I'm hoping that Mayor Reinert's going to maybe see this and expect me at the next council meeting to encourage, to keep the number of competitors for that service open and available to anyone who wants to come in and apply for that license. So with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I believe we had one addition. Ron Schaefer?
Ron Schaefer, Forest Lake. I'm going to do something I hardly ever do. I want to thank Mr. Husnik for voting correctly on the trash issue. And I don't know if it's a matter of money, but Kelly keeps talking about being a public servant. Now, if you want to save money, work for nothing. Cut everybody's wages. You know, we had a chance to get cheaper police service, and nobody wanted to do that. They wanted to pay the police a priority amount of money. So it doesn't balance out to me either you want to save money or you want to spend money. I don't know which you're attempting to do. But I live in the township, and as you know, we have no fire protection, very little police protection. It's all we need. We don't have a walking path. We don't have walking bridges. We don't have parks. And yet, the streetlights I pay for, I can't even see. Now, why don't you charge people for the things that they use? A user fee. That makes sense to me. If I don't need it, and I didn't vote for it, and I ain't going to use it, why should I pay? And I know I never get any response from anybody, but I would sure like to write it in the paper if you can't talk about it. Thank you.
Mr. Norby, welcome.
Yeah, my name is Elvin Norby. I'm, of course, Forest Lake. You're trying to come up with a plan. I didn't go to the last Wednesday's meeting, so I don't know who was there, but some guy named Bruce Miles, I guess, is regards to come up with a strategic plan. I worked in aerospace for 30 years as a contracting pressure, handling a lot of data. Anyway, what did I want to do? When you sucked up the township back in 2001, I wrote a letter, okay? You got a guy named Alan Bockes, I guess is Box. He wrote a letter, too. They were both in the old Forest Lake press, side by side, with two opinions. My opinion was what this city has done, which is still, in fact, today. You guys run everything. We've got to waste nothing. And the other thing was, at Box, Alan Bockes, I guess it, he had a letter in there about coming up with some kind of a strategic planning or finding commissioner or something to do something, because this city was going to regrow. This city has done nothing, and I do mean nothing, since 2004. So hopefully this Wednesday night, I'm going to come down here, if I may, and talk to this guy who was named Miles, and give him a copy of those two letters. He needs to understand that this city has been going downhill since I moved back here in 1990. But might have went out. Walmart came in. In fact, like I say, going back to there, our hardware salesman there, there was another hardware store in town. My memory's bad on names. But the big thing I want to do, I'd like to give this guy that's coming in some kind of idea of what kind of a problem he's got. And the problem he's got is everything this city council's done in the last 29 years has been at the discretion of you five people up there in the audience, on the podium. The taxpayers in this city have had no voice in anything. And like I said, I'm getting old, and I won't be around much longer, but I'd like to at least pass along this information so this poor guy coming in has got some idea what he's stepping in, which is a bunch of crap. Thank you.
With that, we'll close open forum and move on to our agenda item of the evening, which is the refuse and recycling agreement. Patrick, do you want to start us off by summarizing the agreement in front of us? And council, maybe by way of just process this evening, I would recommend, I know there's been a lot of, it's been numerous versions of the contract as we've gotten to this final state that has been shared with you, and in front of you is a printed redline version of the most recent update, which has just the minor changes from the version that was sent last night. I would propose we have staff outline major provisions of the contract, and then we should walk through section by section to talk through any questions or comments that council may have. Does that sound okay?
Mm-hmm.
Very good.
I'll give you two different ways. I'll do a high-end, high-level overview, then we'll talk about a few of the specific things that the contract contains. This agreement will establish performance standards for the contractor for the delivery of the collection services. It sets forth the schedules and the routes for the collection. It will require the contractor to collect a broad array of materials, particularly in recycling, that you'll see in the appendix that's in the agreement. It establishes a transparent and stable pricing for the collection of the services, and for the whole term of the agreement, which we will go over shortly. It has requirements for the contractor to provide annual reports and more information in their reporting, as far as how many pickups we have, what kind of cart size they use, the tonnage, disposal, and provides that in an annual report. So every year that they will come in, they can present to you the annual report. It will provide refuse and recycling collection at the city buildings, parks, and special events. It requires the city, cooperation with the city to do a citywide clean-up date that's yet to be determined and arranged. And that's it. Well, what I'd like to do, then, is go through some of the highlights and not comment on particular pricing, but tell you how the pricing is set. In the contract, in the RFP, the response is the pricing was set in two manners. One was for the solid waste disposal, the other was for the recycling disposal. The solid waste components are two components. One is the pickup charge. That means what it costs the contractor to come out and pick up your garbage cans, and dump them in the truck, and get them back to wherever they're sorting, or whatever they're doing with them. And the second is what's called the tipping fee. That's what I call it. It may be called different things. But that's what it costs for the contractor to take it to the county dump and dump it off. Now, in the contract, those prices are fixed and are regulated, and can only go up a set amount each year for the collection of the garbage. The tipping fees, however, that will be looked at on an annual basis, and we can tie that back to what the county is charging the contractor for using their facility. So what usually will happen is as the county raises their cost to dump the garbage, which they usually always do, they usually don't go down, that price will have to be adjusted. That's true with any contractor, because they're all mandated to use the county facility. So that's a little bit out of the contractor's control, but they have to come and report back to us what that's going to be and why, and then we can tie it back to see if the county's had an increase in service. So there's some control on our part of that. The other thing is the recycling in the appendix, I believe it's C, lays out the recycling, and it's expanded recycling compared to what we have now, particularly in the plastics industry. They will take all items, one through seven, and it has a list of all of the recycled material that it will take. I'll go through, of course, newspaper, mixed paper, corrugated cardboard, box boards, cartons, milk, juice, glass, plastics, metals, aluminum, food beverage cans, foils, foil and trays, and scrap metal, et cetera. So it expands, heavily expands our recycling opportunities there. One of the other adds to this contract is it's going to offer a valet service, or a pickup service, where for those residents who are disabled or cannot, or have a difficult time getting their garbage cans out to the curb, they will offer a for-service fee to come and grab their cans, dump the cans, and then wheel them back to the place that the resident has. I think that's a good thing. I think it will help some of the people in the community that may need that kind of assistance, and may actually keep, may be able to let them stay in their homes a bit longer if they have disabilities. So I think that's important. Customer service, there's been questions about that, and being a local company, well, they are out of, the operations for Republic is out of Blaine, so they're close by. There are local people who work in Blaine, so that shouldn't be too much of a problem with us. And if you want to have more information or discuss that further, the representatives from Republic are in the audience and can talk about their customer service and their location. This is a five-year contract. Like I said before, the fees are pretty well fixed on most of those. I also briefly mentioned that this contract allows, which is very common in other contracts throughout the area, that the contractor will pick up the city's garbage and recycling at the city facilities and parks and special events. That's a pretty common one. And I think that's about the extent of the high level, and if you'd like to go through either page by page or section by section and have questions, either I, Bridget, or the Republic representatives can attempt to answer any questions that you have.
I have a question.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Why December of 2024 rather than August, or whatever they may come out? Because right now, it's not five years.
No, it's actually five and a quarter, or five and a half. It's just because we're trying to, you can change it if you wish. I'm sure that's not a problem. We were just trying to end the contract on the end of the year. It was just a matter of trying to put it at the end of the year, so that if we have a new contractor or we have a new period, it starts at the beginning of each year. If the council wants to change that to August again, I'm sure that the Republic will have no problem with that whatsoever.
It just seems like a fair way of doing it. I mean, it's been brought to my attention, too, that there's some issues with if there's a different contractor trying to take over in December with snow and all the other stuff that goes on. And so it's not exactly the most ideal situation for the city.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's just my opinion.
Patrick, on the, it talks about picking up for, at no charge for the city dumpsters. Does that include all the dumpsters in the city of Forest Lake?
It's all that the city owns, yes.
Okay. How about the airport?
Yes.
I didn't see it on the list here.
Yeah, it was in the, I think it was, it was in the RFP. I don't know if it's on the list, but the airport is included, is included in that pickup.
Okay, it was on page 23. That was my problem.
Okay, let me take a seat. Yeah, it should be on, but the airport is definitely included because it's a city facility.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody got counted.
Any other general questions of staff before we go through, kind of, section by section? I think, given the volume of information, I would like to go through, just call out by section, and please chime in if you have any questions. This can be quick, or fast, or quicker, so depending on whatever council's amount of questions council has. Maybe going through per-section of the contract is definitions, scope, and general terms. Scope and general terms, there is a lot of detail in this section. Any questions that anyone would have for section two in particular, or areas that they would like to point out? I had a-
Councilmember Beistrum? Yeah, I had a question on section 2.6 under the five-year implementation plan. By March 1st, 2020, the city and the contractors shall develop an overall implementation plan. Is this, then, going to be an amendment to the contract at that point?
No, the implementation plan for basic refuse and recycling is happening now. It has to happen now.
Okay.
So it's not a document that will be really presented. It's just how we're going to get the carts out, how they're going to be picked up. Later in the contract, it explains the schedule for pickup Monday through Friday, what time they can start, what time they have to end by. However, the only one that we're looking, we're looking at two distinct items here. One is organics, which is a very up-and-coming recycling effort throughout the state and the nation, and how that happens. I think I explained the last time, Washington County with Ramsey County is looking at creating an organics recycling, and we don't want to try to go off on our own. We want to see what they're coming up with, so we can maybe join that, and whether that's a drop-off or a pickup. So that's a future thing. The other thing is that as the contractor, the second part, as the contractor implements this and goes through it, there may be improvements of service that they may see that they should be able to tell us. Whether they should be going to four-day-a-week, and they can pick up faster, or whether they think they need a different can, or whether they think more education. So what we're trying to get them to do is say, okay, we know that it's a quick implementation, but as we go through this, you should be able to tell us if there's something we can do better.
Okay.
And that's what we're looking for.
Right. Can you explain the second bullet in that section two, improvements in routing, including possible collections?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was saying, looking for improvements. Does the routing need to change? Do the pickup dates need to change?
Okay.
Anything that's available to us to get improved service to the residents is what we're looking for there.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
In section 2.11, the last paragraph, it talks about the contractor should remove all the carts prior to termination, or before the last day of the agreement. That seems a little abrupt. I would think that we would want them picked up, if another provider was selected, not to have them gone before the contract was up.
So it's adjusted language to potentially review based on the nature of next contract term?
Yeah, or maybe it's within two weeks of the contract ending or something. It just seems that removing them before the contract's over doesn't benefit anybody.
Yeah, because honestly, the contract may end on the last day of a pickup, so that's probably a valid point, that we need to give them two weeks to collect whatever cans they are.
Get a pickup for somebody, but there's four other people still in that week that had garbage. So.
Yes.
That's the only one I have in section two.
Good point. I don't know if there's really a question around section 2.8 that I have, but I do want to point out, a lot of the public feedback that I've had is around overall service, and how will we be guaranteed as a city, and how will residents be guaranteed of the service levels that will be provided. And I just want to point out to council that under 2.8, there is an annual performance review. That is the review of the annual report that will be presented every year by Republic. And really, that is our opportunity on a formal basis to go through any concerns around service and update those service plans as necessary. I'd point that out as an official process, and I appreciate that there's an official process as stated in the contract. And then I will also note that within the contract, there's a number of references to a more informal day-to-day, and actually, it's not even informal, it's actually quite spelled out, of day-to-day, what are service level standards, what is appropriate response times, and ultimately, some financial penalties if those service standards are not yet met. And so I want to point that out, because again, I sense there's some urgency or some questions around, how are we going to be certain as a city that this is okay? And I really point to those elements of the contract is where I've looked for definition. Madam, I understand you have your hand up. We will only be taking public comment at the, we only took public comment at open forum, and so that was your opportunity.
Councilmember Beistrum?
I would like to echo that comprehensiveness, the thoroughness of the performance review. That's really stood out for me in this contract, not only in section 2.8, but in section 2.30, performance monitoring, and kind of corrective action at that point, including termination of the contract within 60 days of being notified by the city. I think the message that sends to me is that customer service is taken very seriously, and so I was happy to see that as well.
Correct. And then couple that with 2.31, with the penalties and the actual financial penalties, if those service standards aren't actually met. So other questions specifically to section two, which is overall scope and general terms of collection services?
I think just a couple of other kind of minor things here for me. 2.8, the second bullet, about performance based on feedback from residents to the city. Is there a sense of how that will be collected? And I know that's a detail here, but just out of curiosity.
Well, since Republic is fully electronic and probably has a customer relations management system where they record complaints, I'm sure that we can ask for all complaints that are recorded with Republic on some kind of a printout or a report, just to see what's going on. Obviously, if the customer calls Republic and they're getting little satisfaction, usually what happens in these cases is it accelerates to a staff level, and then we have a higher level of conversation with Republic staff to see what we can do to solve a problem. But hopefully, and probably 95% of the time, anything will be handled by their customer service people. But I believe there's probably some information there that they record, customer. If they don't, I'm sure they do, because that's what happens these days. They'll know, and we can ask for that information.
And then section 2.9 for me, with regard to public education. I was kind of echoing Councilmember Monson's comments at the last meeting around a lot of catching up to do to get our community up to speed. I'm just wondering about the possibility of some sort of annual direct outreach to community, maybe tied to community events and those sorts of things, where we would be able to have more of a hands-on opportunity to understand what can and cannot be recycled, what it should look like when it goes into that bin, that kind of thing.
And not speaking for Republic, but talking with Republic, looking at their RFP response, they do a number of outreaches to the community, to the schools, as a matter of fact. And I am sure that we can encourage Republic to attend some of our events, and be a part of the community as far as those things go. Show up at the Fourth of July, show up at the Arts in the Park, get involved with the schools and recycling programs like they've stated in their RFP. And I'm sure that if Republic wants to comment on that, they can. But I'm sure, I'm almost positive, no. I'm sure it'll be an improvement in educational system than what we have so far.
Can I just keep going? Okay. And then a question on section 2.13, postponed collection. Just curious, how frequently does this happen? I know we've historically had, you know, great service in all conditions, weather conditions, and I'm just curious as to the frequency of postponement and how our residents are notified if that's going to happen.
Yeah, and I don't know how often the statistics are in postponement. I know it takes a pretty major event for that to happen. I would ask Republic to respond to that if they can.
Why don't I accumulate a list of questions to pass to Republic, and we'll go through all, accumulate the list, and then have a Republic representative come up towards the end? Is that okay?
That'd be great.
Perfect. That Councilmember Beistrum, that was on my list as well, of kind of a definition of historical, how often does that happen types of situations was one of my items as well. So thank you for covering that.
I think that's all I have for section two.
Anything else related specifically to section two? All right, moving on, trash collection requirements. Section three, it's kind of the detailed day-to-day logistics of the actual trash collection. Any questions, clarifications of council?
I have none. Nope, this felt pretty straightforward to me.
Yep, none. Section four, collection, recycling collection requirements. Any questions, clarifications, points of comment council would like to make?
No, just reiterating the importance of robust education around this issue.
I just want to make sure I know what happens to all the so-called recycling items that go in that bin. I'm not convinced.
Other questions, or anything else related to recycling?
I guess I would echo comments that were made, and point council to the appendix C, which is the list of materials that are acceptable for recycling. And this was a fair point of a lot of feedback that I heard in the community, and I just want to reiterate, make the point here and reiterate it, that this is a more robust recycling program than what we've previously had. And specifically of importance to me is the expanded plastics, and also the willingness and the ability to be prepared for organics, should we choose in the future to have an organics program. I think I read a third of all of our trash is organics, and that is a fair amount of waste that is currently heading down to that Washington County facility. So that was important to me.
Any specific things related to recycling?
Just on item 6A, the milk, soup, broth, and wine. Are those kind of the waxyer cartons?
Probably add that to the recycling, or add that to the Republic list.
And then I've received some feedback on item six, which is a polystyrene, I believe, styrofoam recyclable, and that one has been problematic, is my understanding, and I'd just like to better understand if that's true in this area or not.
Which item is-
It's plastics one and recyclable number six.
Accumulated question for Republic. Okay. Moving on, item five, yard waste collection requirements. This was fairly straight, absolutely. Councilmember Jarred?
In 5.3, these other compost, those bags that deteriorate, is that provided by Republic at a fee, or do we buy those at home?
No, the bags you'd buy at home- No, the bags you'd buy at Home Depot, Costco, wherever, if you wanted to go. Or you would get an extra cart, where I believe it was $10 an extra season, or $20 extra a season, if you wanted an extra cart.
Any other questions related to section five, yard waste collection?
Is that allowed by our ordinance, bags out?
I'm not sure, but I'm sure it's happened in the past, I'm sure that we've had that, but I don't know specifically.
I don't think so.
We'll have to check and see if that's an issue.
I didn't fully hear, I didn't fully hear the question, was the question if?
It probably has to do with trash, for sure, but I don't know about the others either, so. Just want to make sure.
Follow-up for ordinance review. Next item is rather short, six, bulky item collection requirements. Questions on this? I had none, none. Seeing heads shaking, okay. Item seven, other collection service requirements. Christmas trees, food waste, city cleanup day, walk-up valet service, collection from city buildings. Covered a couple of these items already, but is any specifics that city council wanted further clarification on?
I'm curious as to how eligibility for the walk-up valet service will be assessed, and would this include a short-term disability? Say somebody is, so short-term service or short-term, for a short-term disability? Say someone had surgery or that kind of thing.
That's a great question, we'll put that on the Republic list as well. Okay, billing for services, item eight. Section eight is fairly straightforward in language. I would recommend specific comments around pricing, we wait until we get to the pricing addendum. Any specific questions related to billing processes?
I think it's just clarification on eight, 8.3, that additional overflow trash bag price that whole ordinance issue. We may not, we may, it's possible we shouldn't have that included, I don't know, so.
Or consider changing ordinance or amending ordinance?
Okay.
Keep that on radar. Item nine, insurance and the attorney's favorite other legal requirements. Any questions specific to item nine?
I guess just pointing out again, kind of that rigor or that thoroughness in ensuring quality customer service in section 9.18, the agreement default and termination piece, again, in, within this contract, so kind of sends a message to me that good customer service is important.
Madam Mayor, I just need a little bit more clarification on, it's 9.11, the hiring of drivers and staff. It says contractor agrees to interview and hire all employees of SRC. Seems to be a pretty broad statement, and are they willing to do that?
What this means is that if, it's not all, it's those who are affected by a change in this contract, depending how many people are affected by, for example, if there's three drivers that lose their job because we've changed, they will, Republic will interview them if they meet, and if they meet their standards, which we, they will consider hiring them. You know, we can't force standards on them, I'm sure there's certain driver standards, licensing standards, training standards, but it does have a sunset date, because we don't, you know, we don't want this to go on forever. But if there's a, a driver would have to represent themselves as being a former SRC driver that's been affected by the contract change, and Republic will consider their hiring. You know, we can't force them to hire, but we would like them to consider that if they meet all the standards. And just as a background, talking to the other two, the other Walters, and there's a shortage of drivers in the industry, so if they're qualified and trained, they probably have a good chance.
Do, I don't know, maybe this is a question for Bridget, but does that need to be spelled out a little bit more, or?
Well, Mayor, members of the council, this is language that was negotiated as part of the contract negotiation process, and this was the language that the city was able to have negotiated into the contract regarding that particular provision, so it, you know, it kind of says what it says, which is basically if you were a driver or provided mechanical services, and if your employment is terminated by SRC before October 1st, and if you meet the eligibility hiring criteria for Republic services, then you shall be offered basically employment with that firm. But, you know, I don't know what those eligibility and employment criteria are.
Okay, I'm seeing that down at the bottom, that last sentence, then clinic clears it up for me.
Moving on to the appendices, unless anybody has a, I'm going to skip over the definitions, unless anybody has anything in particular for definitions, please stop me. Any questions around the route map and collection schedule? I guess maybe I would just say as an opening comment, just more just information transfer to those that are watching, this has been part of a transition plan that staff has been working with Republic on over the last week. This was also, there was an initial presentation given as part of the RFP process. Lining up Monday through Friday is illustrated in, on pages 38 through 41 of your contract. Any questions about routing map plan? Appendix C is the recycling list, we touched on this a number of times, anything further on appendix C that we haven't already talked about? I will then throw in and move on to appendix D, which is the bulky item disposal fees. These are as proposed in the RFP. All right, and then the big one is moving on to appendix E, and again, council, stop me if we're going too fast. Next one is appendix E, which starts on page 45 of your packet, which is the trash recycling and yard waste collection and disposal fees. You know, I don't have a question on this section, but I guess the general comment that I would make is, and a little bit of a reference to some of, what we heard both in open forum last week and what we heard in open forum today, is I appreciate that there is a fair amount of concern in the community that you get a low bid, and then what happens in year two, what happens in year three, what happens in year four. And what I want to point out is, in this contract, we've negotiated a five-year rate schedule, and the only thing that can change in that five-year rate is the tipping fee, which is tied directly to the fees that are charged at Washington County. And so, we're setting that rate, which is different than if you are in a open market and individual residents are setting their individual rates and negotiating their individual rates. Because we're giving one provider essentially a monopoly for resident services, in exchange, we're agreeing, here is what the rate structure is going to be. So, if there's concern of rates are going to go up, that wouldn't happen until at least year six, or once we're beyond this contract term, unless for some reason there was a material change negotiated in the contract that we're voting on tonight. So, I just want to put that out there, because I think it is a, it's a fair question, and I think it's an uncertainty, because again, it's unusual that you have a city that is negotiating the rates for all residents, of which then, the provider is going to bill those residents, so just want to get that out there. Other, are there questions on this section, or areas that are unclear?
Just to be clear with the rates, taxes aren't included in the rates, that's predetermined. There's no fuel charges, there's no, you know, surcharges if fuel goes up, or if something majorly changes, it's really a steady price that shows, I think it was about a 3% or less increase on an annual basis for the next five years for pickup.
And to be clear, fuel charges are not allowed.
Not allowed, no.
Not allowed over the five-year period.
So, if gas goes up to $9 a gallon, gas goes up to $9 a gallon.
Right. One of the questions, one of the things that I'm, I was interested in, but I'm not interested in on year one, is there was another fee proposed for the recycling services, which was essentially a partnership program, where we participate in the risk of those recycling markets, or we participate in the pricing of those recycling markets. Is there opportunity to transition to a different program at a future date of this contract, or are we kind of set into the single, the single?
For now, we are, we've accepted the fixed rate cost. If, at some point in the future, whether it's after the five years or before the five, it's before the five years, either party probably could ask for the contract to be opened, and I don't see that happening in the next five years, I think a steady, but as recycling and the collection and the processing continues to evolve and mature, that may be something you look at in the future. I can't, I don't know if anybody can tell you where the recycling markets are going to go, and if there's some magic thing that's going to happen that makes that valuable as they once were in the early 80s or even recently, so, no. I would, I recommend right now the fixed price, I think it's more stable, and more reliable, and better for the consumer to know what's coming than to get a sticker shock if we're playing the markets and we're losing.
So, thank you for clarifying, this is assuming of, over the five years, that we are at that, those set rates with recycling not participating in that recycling market? Or not adjusting pricing based on the recycling market?
I did want to make one comment on appendix D, the bulky items. You know, in doing kind of a contract-to-contract analysis, I will have to say that, you know, this curbside pickup price is very fair and competitive comparatively, but the one thing that I did notice as well is there were not additional trucking fees affiliated or associated with this, or additional tax on top, so I just wanted to make a comment on that. They align nicely fee-for-fee from contract to contract, but there were not any extra costs on top of this one.
Yes, Wade. The other comment I want to make is, it's no secret that I'm not in favor of this at all, because it's going to end up costing me some money. That's a very selfish way of looking at it, particularly because I use the yard waste buckets, and here it's for 195-gallon bucket, and then you pay extra for whatever. If you have more than five bags, hell, I can get a couple of buckets for $70 from the other company. And so, to me, that was, and when you add the whole thing up, there is actually no difference in my cost, just be, from this contract to the other. And so, I think there's going to be some surprises along the way, and I'm not convinced that this is a good idea. So, anyways, you've heard my spiel, and how much we can do about it, so.
Any other overall questions or comments before we have the Republic representative come up and?
Madam Mayor, just on appendix C, on the monthly yard waste, can we add the extra cart is $2.50 a month or $20? That's the one that?
$20 a season.
Right, for the year.
It's an eight-month season, so $2.50 or $20 works for me.
Well, I divide it up for the year, yearly cost.
Paul, what page was that on? What page was that on?
My page 46, I don't know if I have a different page than you do, but it's the second to the last page.
Okay.
About the page.
Thank you.
Okay, I would recommend we have a representative from Republic join us, and then we can bring it back to council for further discussion.
Hi, thank you, I'm Beth Matisa, I'm the Municipal Services Manager for Republic Services. I'll answer any of the questions that I can in my role, but I also have other, two other representatives from our organization that their primary focus is more operational.
Bring them up and introduce them as well.
Oh, that'd be great. David Latham, this is our division manager, he oversees the Blaine Division, and then we have our assistant controller, Caleb Hanson, and so, when it comes to any of some of those financial questions, I'll ask him to approach.
Perfect, thank you, welcome. So, to start with, can we talk about customer complaints? You know, it's a requirement that you reported on an annual report, how were those accumulated? Just kind of walk us through day-to-day, how those, kind of how you handle those?
Sure, absolutely. When a customer complaint comes in, what happens is notes go into the system. There is a specific code that you have to put in there, and in, into the system, and so what we do is, we pull a query to see what all complaints have come in, and then we categorize them and provide you with reporting. That can be done on a monthly basis if you so do choose. Generally, we do it annually, but whatever works best for you. We like to look at those, because then we can identify if there are any issues, and then can quickly address those.
Next question was around postponed collections. Give us an example in the Twin Cities market of, how frequently do you hit that, and what typically creates that cause, and just give us a little more perspective of what you foresee.
Certainly. We all understand and probably lived here last winter, it was very challenging, right? Lots of snow, lots of weather condition. We only postpone one day out of our Blaine Division, and that was due to ice. Ice is a very difficult thing for our trucks, they weigh a lot of money, I mean, they weigh a lot, and they could cause a lot of damage. So, with ice, that would be something, if we're a sheet of ice, then what we do is we call the customers, we have a call-em-all system, where we can just automatically send out a message to them, also email messaging for those who have emails on file, and we let our residents know that due to unsafe conditions, that their service will be postponed one business day. So, we do make that determination right away, we contact the city representative right away, and then at that time, we ask the city to post something on their Facebook, we would then post something on the Facebook, or the website that we provide for you, our call-em-all and email blast.
Thank you. Council, please chime in if you have any follow-up questions. Appendix C, this, the recycling, as you know, that's had a fair amount of interest from this council.
Sure.
Can you answer Councilmember Beystrom's question or clarify around specifically, under paper fibers, cartons, milk, soup, broth, those cartons?
Yeah, aseptic cartons. This is something, there's some good information about those on the carton council website. These would be, when I go to Costco, I buy a protein that comes in a nice little box, that's an aseptic. My milk carton, you know, you've got the little button on top, you screw, that's an aseptic, and we do accept aseptics, and we do have a market for those.
Very good. Clarification under plastics, polystyrene, I think was the question?
We collect one through seven. Again, it's real difficult, if you don't, to educate, styrofoam is not a curbside recyclable, so we do ask on our cards to please keep styrofoam out of the recycling.
So, it is not recyclable?
Styrofoam is not recyclable, and you will see that that is, you will see that that marries up with the messaging by the Recycling Education Committee and MPCA and other haulers.
Packing peanuts, just by nature of education, packing peanuts as well, not recyclable?
Correct.
Item seven, four, talks about walk-up eligibility. Can you maybe just start at the top, walk us through how you determine eligibility, and maybe for clarification, it is a, for, the Bane family wants walk-up service, that is a fee that we would have to charge, because we are in theory able to get our carts out, but for those that are either elderly or disabled, not able to get their carts out, that you have a valet service.
that you have a valet service. And talk, talk about what is a fee service versus what is just in-kind provided?
Valet service is a premium service, and so, we do offer that at charge. We have that, we have that pricing at a very low charge, reason being is the intent of valet service isn't for the person who does not want to roll their cart down, you know, a long driveway in the winter. It is truly for those in need, and that's why we price it as such. And so, cities, there are many cities that, I mean, some have an application process, some have an application fee, there are many different ways to approach this. You know, we don't find a lot of abuse when it comes to valet service. We would hope that that would not be the case here in the city of Forest Lake as well. We know that you mentioned for the person who just had surgery and can't get their cart down, yes, we do, we will do that on a short-term basis. And so, we know that life changes, we know that surgery happens, and most often, very unexpectedly. And so, when that happens, certainly, actually, we prefer when we get a call, it's kind of, it's nice to hear that it's temporary service. It means that that resident plans on getting better, and can resume normal life, you know, as they did previously. So, it's something that we do for all of our cities, and again, we've not had much abuse, and we wouldn't expect that here.
Councilmember Bystrum, answer your question?
I think so.
Those are all of the questions that I noted as I walked through the section by section. Is there anything else you'd like us hearing the discussion, anything else you'd like us to know or consider at this time?
Um, I guess I would like to speak to customer service, because I think that's all top of mind. I've heard it a couple of times here this evening. I just wanted to let you know that we do have a call center, there are three different areas. The, for our area, Indianapolis, Indianapolis is designated to our area. If there, if call volumes are high, they may go to North Carolina or Phoenix. So, we do have three, and we did provide that information in our RFP. In addition to that, you know, we've got an escalation process, all of that. But in addition to that, we understand where your city is coming from, you've had the same hauler for a number of years, a local hauler. And so, we have now a website, excuse me, an inbox established for you, so once we start service, if someone has a question, a concern, if they choose not to call customer service, they can certainly email in, and then we can get back to them. We're also in the process of establishing a local number for deployment, so if someone wishes to speak to someone locally, they will be able to call that number, there will be voicemail with that number, if that agent is, you know, is with another resident at the time. So, I should have that number very soon, and I will be passing that off to Mr. Casey as well. So, those, both the inbox, the email address, and the phone number can be published on social media, on your website, and then of course, in our welcome letter, we will also give that information, so that the resident is very clear that they have a number of options of reaching us. And certainly, in terms of the escalation process, let's say, for instance, should a resident call in and they are not satisfied, generally what happens with that is then they'll call the city and they'll say, hey, they said that this is, this house is not within the city boundary, just using a fictitious example. And so, then we'll get an email, that would be, we, meaning myself, or my administrative support, will get an email saying, hey, I got a cus, I got a call from Mrs. or Mrs. Jones at this address, this phone number, this email, and this is what, you know, they had an incidence happen with customer service, and they were, we believe, told incorrectly. So, then what we do is then we take and call the customer, get things resolved, report back to the city, and then, in that case, it could have been a problem with the map. Let's say there was an expanded area in the city or something, or new development, and if that wasn't reported by a city engineer or something to us, we wouldn't know it's there. So, in that case, we would resolve it, and along with that, again, fix root cause, and report back to the city. And that is work for all of our other cities, very nicely. And customer service is open seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, eight to one on Saturdays. So, lots of, lots of opportunity for residents to, to get in touch with us.
Other questions for Ms. Matisson?
Sure. Is there a problem with having the contract in, in August, so it goes August, August, or whatever?
Actually, we set it up that way, because initially, the RFP was to begin the beginning of the year, and then there was a change. I, I don't know what all that was. Then we received a notification that we would start early, and if, you know, that, that service would need to begin early. So, this is the way we bid it. And the nice thing about this, the way it's structured right now, is by having August through January, and then start January to January, it would fall in tandem with Washington County in terms of any adjustments they make. They generally make those in January. So, what that means is, let's say, in January, we know that the rates are negotiated year to year. Now, if, if we move that to an August, a resident may see an increase in their bill for disposal in January, and then another increase in the summer, in August, for their actual service, if that's changed. And that might not be a positive resident experience, because that can be confusing to residents when you're changing the bill twice a year. It does create more calls, sir.
So, what you're looking at here is a four-and-a-half-year contract?
I did not establish that.
I mean, that's exactly what it is, it's from August until?
The RFP was year, beginning, the beginning of the year, and we received notification that if we chose to bid, we would start collection, it would be moved up to August.
I understand that, but December twenty, in two thousand twenty-four is four years, four-and-a-half years. Huh? From where? From two thousand nineteen?
All twenty, all third, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. So, five and a half years.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Two thousand twenty would be the first year, August to August would be two thousand twenty.
I'm talking current structure. Without changing, it's starting from August, it says from August until January of two thousand nineteen, that's just what, half a year, let's say. But then the contract says all of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and ending on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, January. Okay, fine, use your math. But August to August is one year. Two thousand twenty?
It's a five-and-a-half-year contract.
And five years, five months, or five years, four months.
Madam Mayor, just, that's on our end, though, that we changed that, correct? We added that in when we put the?
We had to place an addendum out to the?
Right. We did that.
To the, to the RFP, when we couldn't extend the current contract. So, we weren't able to get an extension on the current contract, so we had to accelerate or move up that date to the, the first part of August, August fifth to be exact. That's why we did it that way. We, we originally scheduled it for a flat five years, but with the inability for us to get an, an extension on the current contract, we had to, we had to change course a bit.
Thank you, I just needed to clarify that, because I thought that was the case.
I'm just calling it from August to August, that's all I can tell you.
Any other questions for the Republic representatives? Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll bring final questions back to council. Any final questions, thoughts? As a motion, as a, just a matter of procedure this evening, staff has prepared a resolution for tonight for us to consider, it's resolution in front of us, and you've probably got a lot of paper stacked in front of you, seven fifteen nineteen zero one, which is the resolution approving contract with Allied Waste Services of North America, doing business as Republic Services of the Twin Cities of Blaine. So, I will either entertain a motion for resolution, or any additional questions or comments that council may have at this, at this time. And Bridgette, please.
Yeah, briefly, just for point of clarification, there were three specific amendments that were mentioned by council during discussions, so if there is a motion to be made to approve the contract, or to adopt the resolution approving contract, I anticipate that that motion might include to approve the contract as presented with the following revisions, revision of section two point one one to require removal of carts within two weeks of termination of agreement, amend section seven point five to add weekly pickup from the airport of refuse and recycling with additional detail on the number of cans and locations, and addition, an amendment to the Exhibit E, to, and also within the contract language itself, to provide for an option for additional yard waste carts for subscription service, and not, I don't recall if there's a specific number, if it was two, up to two additional carts or three, but those were three pieces I recall council members raising some questions about.
Thank you, Bridgette. That lines up with my notes as well. Does anybody have any other proposed contract language that they would expect to see? Hearing none?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Gerard?
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution Number zero seven dash one five dash one nine dash zero one, a resolution approving contract with Allied Waste Services of North America, DBA Republic Services at a Twin Cities Blaine for comprehensive residential refuge and recycling collection service, including three amendments, one for two point one one, requirement of cart removal, seven point five, including the pickup of garbage and recycling at the airport, and Amendment E on the yard waste, additional container for twenty dollars per season.
I hear a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, I, Karen, can we call a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bystrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
No.
Mayor Bane?
Aye.
Motion carries. And that being our final item on the agenda this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion, second, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and we're adjourned.